How the history of Pleasant Grove has been collected and how it's been assembled over the years. It seems to me that there are...
Hey, we've got our sound.
We've got sound now?
We've got sound. You talk to the microphones.
Scott. The marvels of technology. There are at least five major places where you can go to get material on Pleasant Grove history. The first is... One of the earliest books was put out is the one by Howard R. Driggs on Tempanogus Town. It was put out in '47, sponsored by the Lions Club. That's a major source. And of course, the more recent 2007 item that Beth Olson and Mrs. Such put out, which is an excellent, excellent source. So that's one leg in the information sources that you have. Another major leg, of course, is the wonderful ladies at DUP. I don't see enough gray hair here among the women to there be many DUP members here. But the DUP has been a cornerstone of historical work in the city. Another cornerstone has been the local newspapers that I'm talking about, Pleasant Grove Review particularly. In addition, there are occasional authors like Walker and others that do stuff on Pleasant Grove history that's quite useful. And then in addition, another place that's very useful to go is to the LDS Church Genealogical Site Family History or Family Search, excuse me. That's a wonderful source. And of course, there's a lot of material on Pleasant Grove, the BYU library, as well as the state historical library. This is where our history has been generated and collected and is stored currently. What are some problems in this that I see? Well, the local newspapers are a dying breed. The Temponogus Times still occasionally puts out an item, but it's on life support, to say the least. So we can't depend in the future on local newspapers being a repository, it seems to me, for local history. Another major source, of course, is the DUP. And it seems to me, in my opinion, the DUP is likewise on life support. Most of the people that are members of the DUP, and I have a lot of respect for these ladies, are great-grandmothers. They're not going to be around forever. And it's not an organization that replaces the Geritol-for-Lunch Bunch with the Pepsi generation. Another problem with the DUP, of course, is its original charge, which was to collect and maintain information about pioneers. Who were the pioneers? People who came to Utah prior to the Transcontinental Railroad being completed in 1869. Well, most of those people have died by 1920. So the charge of the DUP is collecting on information on people that died before 1920. Well, how about those of us that were born later, lived later? Don't we count? You know, there's three elements to history. There's the past, there's the present, and the future. All of that's important for history. The DUP collects almost exclusively the old, old stuff. So two major pillars in the historical generating information in Pleasant Grove is not going to be around in the future. So I wonder, it seems to me that we've got to think through a new system. We can no longer passively sit and expect the DUP and local newspapers to do most of our collecting for us. They will not be around in 2050 when you'll have another spasm here in the city council to do something about the bicentennial of Pleasant Grove and want to do another book. That just won't be around. Let me make a comment about your website. I've looked at the website for the Pleasant Grove City. I've looked at the website that Sherry has for the library, and gee whiz, they're thin on history. They really have been on a severe diet. And I've looked at Linden's similar pages, and they've got a lot more information, a lot more friendly information about history of Linden than Pleasant Grove does. You're not exploiting your website. As a minimum, you ought to at least advertise the book that you're trying to sell on that website, which you do not. Does anybody know, anybody on the council? How many more copies of this have you got to sell?
None actually knows. There's none?
Is that privilege information? Got a few hundred left?
We're out of...
Second, four hundred. Let me give you three comments on this existing book. This is a marvelous collection of history. Beth Radmil and company did a spectacular job on it. But you've got three problems with this book. One, there's no date on it. The catalogers go crazy when they get a publication and it doesn't say when it was published. I believe it was published in 2007, but there's none of the three books that say that. Second, it's a shame when Beth Ryan or Beth Radmil Olson spent three or four years of her life, dedicated a huge amount of information there, that she isn't listed, at least as one of the editors. There's no editor, no author listed. And finally, and most fatally, is the books don't have any index. You've got 1,500 pages in these three volumes, and a person's got to plow through all 1,500 pages manually to find if Isidore Glotz, his relative, is mentioned in the book. That's what an index is for. For nickels and dimes, it seems like to me that the council could get a professional indexer to index this publication, and then there's a minimum offer that as a PDF file on your website for people to download that already have this book. Okay. Another comment on these two books. Both of these books have been digitized. They are available in digital form. I've given Sherry copies on a thumb drive of both of these volumes. They are available electronically. Therefore, I wouldn't recommend that you think about doing a second version of the book. It's going to be available free, and is available free now. And if you've got a very large inventory of the books that you've currently got, you might want to think about dropping the price and getting rid of them so that... And then you might want to tie, put a spot on your website that says, hey, click this button, you can download the Driggs book for free. Or click this other button, and you can download the three volumes of this for free. That'd be a much more, make it much more accessible than it currently is. I ask myself the question, who's going to be the shepherd of PG history after the DUP passes on? Who's going to collect the information on people from 1920 to 2050? You just simply don't have a mechanism in town to do that, to incentivize people to do history and a mechanism to collect that history. I think that some people might look to poor Sherry here and say, well, Sherry, your library ought to be the repository, be responsible for generating that historical material. I think that that's completely unrealistic. Libraries, local libraries, are not set up to handle historical information. And let me chide the council on one other item. When Beth Radmil Olson died, if I'm not mistaken, somebody went with a pickup truck over to her place and loaded up half a dozen boxes of primary materials that she used to create this book, pictures, et cetera, et cetera. Gee whiz, that's pure gold. Now, the last I checked, maybe things have changed, but the last I checked, those five or six boxes are in scotch someplace in the deep recesses of the city's office, uncataloged, inaccessible, and gathering dust. Now, would it improve the system if you got a pickup truck and hauled that over to Sherry's house? Well, I think not. Sherry and her staff is not set up to do the archival work that's necessary to deal with this kind of material. She, in turn, I'm sure, would take it down the basement and put it in the closet, or she would take it upstairs and hide it with some other storage stuff that she's got in the attic. So you've got to think about, where do we put this kind of material, especially the material you've already got in hand, where it can be used? Well, it's got to go into professional hands of archivists that know how to deal with this material. And where are those sources? Well, the Utah Historical Society Library in their old real brand station is a primary place. A second place that might be used, of course, is the Utah or the Family History Library, which has an excellent collection. The other place, of course, is the BYU library. I'm unfamiliar with the UVC, whether they have the capacity analyst material. But you shouldn't expect the library to collect and catalog this. They do not have the experience of local libraries to do this. Some years ago, my mother died. She had three or four boxes of history on Manella history. And I took all of those boxes up to the Utah Historical Society Library, and they did a magnificent job of cataloging and putting that catalog information up on the internet. So I would heartily recommend that you clean out your closets and give it to people that can put it in a form that can be used. What are we going to do about collecting information? Again, with the newspaper gone, DUP going horizontal, who's going to generate the primary information about the people who've lived from 1920 on? The primary information that you need. We've got a major problem with electronics. Electronics cut two ways on this kind of historical information. On the one hand, that electronic media is a tremendous asset to get access to stuff that's in the system. You can dial up now and get access to an immense amount of material. But at the same time, this electronic media is suffocating the generation of the material, the primary material that we feed into history. When's the last time that you wrote a letter by hand or typewriter and sent it to somebody? When is the last time that you wrote in your journal or your personal history? When's the last time that you read one of your relatives that's written their autobiography? These are the raw materials that historians use in order to create a history. That's what Beth and her colleagues used to create this history of 2007. Electronics has destroyed all of that. Most of you communicate with each other, with your relatives, through what? The telephone. No record of that kept. You do an immense amount of email. Where's the email track? A lot of you, like our president, may be using Twitter. You may be on Facebook. What's wrong with those repositories? They aren't repositories. Messages are gone. They aren't stored. There's no way that a historian can get at those items later to add to history. I don't know how many of you have read David McCullough's wonderful book on biography, John Adams. If any of you have, you'll notice that almost the entire book is based on the letters that John Adams wrote to Abigail or that Abigail wrote to John Adams. My guess is that book could not be written about a current president, especially Trump, because he's on Twitter all of the time. So given this electronic disaster in one way for history, we've got to come up with some other creative ways to get people to create documents, information that can be used in the future. Just a couple of ideas, and I'm not sure these are good or bad. We ought to be doing, it seems to me, a lot more on oral histories. I know the folks out in Linden are into this in a significant way. And the big advantage of oral histories is that we have mediums now to store that easily. And at least on Family Search, you can even put short oral histories up on Family Search and store them. But I think that it might be possible, for example, to have programs where our seniors in high school, it'd be good for them to go out and visit with some older folks, interview them. It'd make the kids feel good, it'd make the older folks feel good, and important to have their experiences recorded. Similarly, we have a lot of scouts that are looking around for Eagle Scout projects. And maybe that we could encourage them to do oral histories.
Can I just jump in for a second?
Sure.
We have Representative Green here that needs to leave in a few minutes, and he's here on another issue. If it's okay with the council, we'd love to sit down with Mr. Adams and kind of get the things that he's talking about for us as staff to work with him, and we can put together a list of requests and ideas, and then bring that back another day to the city council and talk through that. Would you be okay with that, Dale, if we did that?
Do you know why? It's... You know, at this point, I can conclude.
Okay.
Because I think what you've got to do is you've got to ask them serious questions about what you do about PG history. You can't go on as you did in the past. Okay. Thanks for giving me a time to unwind.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service and helping us digitize, and your passion for history. That's awesome. Thank you so much.
He has not only expressed passion through words, but through money. And when I started here about three and a half years ago, he had donated about, if my records are correct, about $10,000 toward digitizing the paper. And then, after I'd been here a few months, he donated another $10,000 to do another eight or nine years' worth of newspapers. I mean, it's an expensive process. And then he came back to me and said, I think we need, you need to do your part to get this money, so I'll match whatever you can raise. And so I started looking for grants, and we did the rest of it through a combination of his money and grants that I found. But he ended up donating, if I got it all, $36,200.
Nice. (applause) Just wanted to recognize him and say thank you.
We have such an amazing history here in Pleasant Grove. We're going to be 167 years old in September, and we need people to know about the history, and not just from social media, but from the books and pictures and every way that you're digitizing it. And so, thank you for that, because it is important history, and we want to honor the people that have come before us, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Thank you, really. Okay. But we, I think it'd still be a good idea, though, Scott, that we meet with Mr. Adams.
Does Sherri have your contact information?
I do.
Okay. So we'll, I mean, I can sit down with them, and there's some good points that we just need to flesh out a little bit as staff, and so I'll work with Sherri on that.
Awesome. Thank you. Okay. Moving on to item six, public hearing to consider...
Sorry, can we move to item seven?
Yeah, we can. Yes, sorry.
Let's discuss that.
So we'll skip to item seven and then come back to item six here. Item seven, discussion of fireworks in Pleasant Grove City. Are you taking this on, Scott?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mayor, City Council, if you recall, I believe you received an email from a resident a couple of weeks ago with some concerns about the fireworks in our city. At that time, it was requested to be put onto a city council agenda for us to talk about some of the issues that were brought up. The Representative Brian Green was also included on that email and responded to the person that sent the original email. And we, once we decided to put on the agenda, we invited Representative Green to come and talk a little bit from the state perspective on fireworks. So just a little bit, what the email, there was three issues that came up through the email. One is safety, fire safety. The other was noise, you know, the loudness of the fireworks. And then the third thing was special event permits for fireworks. So we'll talk about number three, I think, after Representative Green has a chance to talk. Items number one and two, when it comes to fire safety and to the noise, as Tina's done her research on it, we, as a city, are limited in what we can do. There's a state law that regulates fireworks, and as a city, we're not allowed to go more restrictive than what that law says. Now, we're allowed, and we do this. We have certain areas in our community that we do not allow fireworks. And that's really is a protection for fire danger up on the bench. We don't want aerials, or fireworks for that matter, to get into the foothills there and to start fires. And so, that is something that we've imposed as a city. That doesn't take away other safety issues and concerns that maybe you might hear about, about maybe some of these things landing on somebody's house or things like that. You've probably read in the media that there have been a couple cities that had enough fire issues over the Fourth of July, that by the time the 24th rolled around, they banned fireworks within their city. Now, does a city have the power to do that? We're, we don't know. I mean, according to what Tina's researching, that if the cities were banning fireworks, it was probably under something different than the firework code from the state. So when it comes to noise and the safety, we feel as a city, we're limited in what we can do in regards to that. The special events permit is totally up to us, and we'll talk about that in a minute. But if it's okay, I'd like Representative Green to just talk briefly about some of the discussions, or maybe there's not discussions yet, but some of the things that the state is considering when it comes to fireworks.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you, council, for giving me a few minutes. Scott talked about the email as if it was the only one that you'd received. I find that hard to believe. This time of year, I receive a lot of emails every year over this very issue. It is, it is a much more difficult issue than it would appear on its face. And for some reason, years ago, years before I was in the legislature, the state decided that they would exercise their supremacy in this area. And so they've created a fireworks code, or a fireworks act, State Fireworks Act, which is Section 537220 through 225. And that essentially says that during these periods of time, a city or a county may not prohibit the discharge of fireworks. That raises the question, and it's a valid question, it's one I struggle with, what is the appropriate level of regulation or control for fireworks? Is it a state issue? Should there be a uniform state policy? I'm not convinced that there should be. That's the status that we're dealing with, but it seems to me that cities and counties deal more with the day-to-day public safety issues. The restrictions, or, excuse me, the exceptions to the restriction that Scott talked about are really twofold. One is if the fire code official in a jurisdiction determines that there are, that there are extreme hazardous environmental conditions, that areas within the jurisdiction could be restricted. And I understand, it's been policy here in the city for as long as I remember, that above the canal is sort of that hazard area, and that's due to increased amounts of brush and forests and trees and things that are potentially combustible. The other exception is one of a public safety. For instance, you could pass an ordinance that says you can't ignite fireworks within 100 feet of a gas station, for obvious reasons. But those are really the two exceptions. So the question is, and what I want to know from your perspective, is, do you want more control over this issue? Do we, and this is a delicate balancing of interests. I'm not convinced that somebody has a constitutionally protected right to create mayhem in a neighborhood to celebrate. I don't know that that type of activity is really, is protected by our freedom of expression and freedom of speech. Perhaps there is, to an extent, but those are issues that we need to discuss, and certainly need cities to weigh in on this. It's an issue that really hasn't come up a whole lot during my five legislative sessions. So I think everyone really kind of accepts the status quo, and yet, year after year, we hear from a lot of citizens. And there are legitimate concerns. I mean, we have a lot of veterans with post-traumatic stress syndrome. It really is a hardship for them. We have a lot of citizens with pets that are just driven crazy and run away, some never to be found, when this occurs. So what is the appropriate balance? And should the, should each city decide that for itself? I'm happy to work with you in whatever you want. I understand there is a competing interest here, and those people who want to discharge fireworks should have some ability to do so. But ultimately, if we kick this down to the city level and you put a complete ban on it, or one particular city does, I mean, they'll deal with their citizens, they'll work that out. It's much easier for the citizens to work that out, I believe, at the city level than at the state level. Interestingly, I haven't heard anything from your advocate at the legislature, the League of Cities and Towns. I don't know if you've had communication with them, whether there's a growing push by cities and counties to try to reclaim some of that authority. But I have no strong feelings one way or the other. I think there is some interest in protecting the right of citizens to do some celebration. But just last night, up in my neighborhood, which is above the canal, it shouldn't, we shouldn't have any fireworks, and we had a lot during the Fourth and the 24th. But just last night, there were some aerials going off, right there, just a few homes from me. It creates a situation where if you do have ordinances, you've got enforceability issues. You've got a conflict, neighbors wanting to get along with their neighbors but not wanting to deal with these issues, would be faced with the challenge of reporting their neighbor or not, or, you know, you have to beef up patrols during those times. So those are all considerations that you would have to wrestle with. I'm happy to do my part at the state level to try to accommodate the citizens and the city and county governments in a way that I think makes more sense. I came in here tonight not wanting to tip my hand and indicate where I stand on this, but I just kind of replaying this, and my comments in my mind, I think I've already done that. I'm one of those citizens that gets quite annoyed by the excessive celebration. Stuff on the Fourth, on the 24th, on New Year's Eve, that doesn't bother me. But when it goes on for days, and even outside of those prohibited, or those prescribed timeframes, and we don't have enforcement to deal with it, it's, I understand how some citizens get to the point where they reach out or lash out to their elected officials and demand solutions. So I'm happy to work with you on solutions. I know there are a couple of legislators who have indicated, as a result of their constituents contacting them, that they're going to be working on some legislation. I don't know what that looks like yet, and I don't know how far it'll go, but I can tell you this, nothing will go anywhere unless there is a united effort by cities, through the League of Cities and Towns. I think they have, they carry great influence up there. If this is a direction you want to go, then even more importantly than dealing with me, I think you need to engage them. And by extension, they would engage other cities and see if there is a consensus to try to do something. I would rather leave it to cities and counties to make those determinations. I can't think of a logical reason that the state ought to be exercising complete control over this and have a uniform standard or a uniform code throughout the state. It seems to me it's something that is particularly situated to be within the city's control, dealing with public health and safety issues, much more than the state does. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
I just have a couple of things. And actually, my, I think annually, we probably get one letter to all of us, and it's addressed to all of us. I get much more communication when we win state somewhere and the fire trucks go up Second South.
And people don't like that?
No, there's just a few.
Okay.
But...
But that's just one time?
No, no, no. We win state all the time.
Oh, yeah, okay.
It's multiple times during the year.
Wait, did American Fort leave? So, in thinking about this being a state-regulated, or a county, or a city, the very first thing I think of, well, first of all, I just think of civility with neighbors, and that's just a neighborhood thing. Just, you know, I think the call there is just, you know, for civility and thinking of each other. I also think we have a noise ordinance, which I think that that could probably be a local-controlled thing. The problem that I have, if it's smaller than a county, is that we could be saying no, and American Fort could be saying yes. And then you have those residents that are on the borders of those, that, so this is a noise thing. I understand the veteran thing.
So I just, yeah, I don't know why it continues to...
And that would be a special event permit.
Right. And the city would, is permitted to do that.
Right. So, yeah, I mean, I do feel like it's too long. There needs to be a reasonable, I mean, when you, by the time you add it up, you're looking at now weeks that this is kind of going on, and I can understand how that would be hard for, you know, people, young kids, and pets, and veterans, and it is, it does kind of become a health and safety issue, the fire hazard. So I would say it's too long at this point. I definitely want people to have the right to celebrate. I do like the statewide, you know, regulations to a point, but allowing the cities to have that control as well, and say, you know, when they hear back from, you know, the citizens about what's working for our community and what's not, the ability to change that, so...
I would encourage you to begin discussions with the League of Cities and see what their response is. One city, whatever you decide to do, isn't enough to move the needle, so...
I think it was like five or six cities this year that actually did that ban, so I'm curious to see if the League moves on it, or doesn't. I mean, Representative Green, I...
What did they ban? Like, just a time period ban, or 100% ban?
24th, they just banned it. And so that's, I'm curious.
Wow.
But I'd sat above your house on the Fourth, right, in that so-called zone, not even close, right?
No, my street was lit up for hours.
Yeah. And you have a nice empty field over there to your right, to the north. It scared me.
Yeah, we are a little nervous, but, you know, we also want to accommodate our neighbors within reason, and I think most citizens do. But like Councilwoman Lamone said, it's, it does seem to be getting out of control at times. And then last night, when I saw the aerials going, there were only two of them, but somebody had some leftovers, and they shot them off just a couple houses down, and...
But when that's happening on, you know, a weekday at 11:30 at night, I mean, it's, and it's out of the permitted time, that's hard. I mean, I'm looking at the dates for this year, and it was July 1st to July 7th, July 21st to the 27th, and maybe midnight's too long, I don't know. It just seems like it keeps going longer and longer.
And it's 1:00 AM on New Year's and Chinese New Year. For some reason, that made it in the code, so I don't know. Chinese New Year lobbyists up there working hard, too.
What, what? Okay.
Hey, Brian, one thought I have, I mean, we sure appreciate your good work and your advocacy for local control and your time that you're taking to share your thoughts with us. One possible policy reasons why a state-level standard is valuable is just the difficulty cities have educating people of what the restrictions are specifically, and the specific areas in our city where it might be prohibited, or times that were different. And so there is some value, in my mind, of having people not afraid that they're going to... they're going to, you know, what I did was allowed in Linden, and I went across the street, and suddenly I'm in violation of something I didn't even know. And so that's a risk and a value I see in the state-level standards that have been set in the past. So I think there may be value. I get a lot of calls from people on various perspectives of this. We don't get a lot to the whole body of the council, but you do hear people, and I have people that have called me up and say, hey, I fired off a bunch of stuff, and I found out I was outside of an appropriate window to do it. Like, well, I'm not going to turn you in, but you should know that this is what the timeline is, and this is how it works at the state level. So educating the public is a challenge with a lot of variation from city to city.
Well, there is some validity to that, but I, the thing that comes to mind is, we do that all the time with other local ordinances. Speed limits, for instance, go down 1100 north. As soon as you cross into American Fork, it's 25 instead of 35, the speed limit. There are a lot of people that get tickets there because of that change in jurisdiction, so...
But hopefully, there's a sign.
There is a sign, but...
I don't know that we necessarily have fireworks are now permitted.
Haven't left the road. They're on the same road, and so they don't, it doesn't register with a lot of them. And so those are policy calls that you get to make as an elected official. So again, whatever help you want from me, let me know. Work with the League. If it's the League just lobbying the state for a reduction in the days, but still can still retain a statewide regulation, you know, that's something that could work, too. But I appreciate the opportunity to come and visit with you about this. Any other questions?
Grateful for all you do for us. Thanks.
Thanks for your time.
I can just make a couple of quick comments. I do appreciate Representative Green for being available and accessible. And if part of the discussion is giving cities control on our own governance, I would suggest that we work on that. We'll start with fireworks, and I got a list of about 10 other things for you, Brian, that we'd love the state to abdicate to the cities. But what we'll do is, we'll work with the Utah League of Cities and Towns. Since fireworks season, we have not had our Legislative Policy Committee meeting. And I'm assuming there are other cities that have concerns. The two that came to mind were Cottonwood Heights and West Jordan, that both banned fireworks because they had some pretty major fires on the 4th of July during that time. So there are a lot of issues. The sound, the noise issues is really a conflict. If they're allowed, state law allows them, and we can't restrict them, then I don't know how we can shut them down using our noise ordinance. And so there's an inherent conflict there, and those are things we'd have to work through. So with that, we'll take it to the Utah League, and we'll work through it on that end. The last item really is the special event permit. And as Diana pointed out, we do issue a couple of those a year. The Strawberry Days rodeo shoots fireworks, and that's outside of the window, which we can allow as a city through the special event permit process. And I think we have a couple, we have a neighborhood show, and then the guy that sells fireworks by the Water Gardens will do a show one night outside the window. And, you know, he files for the permit, and we issue that. So that's something for us to consider. If the city council wants us to consider not allowing those special event permits, that's something we can put on an agenda later and have that discussion. Right now, those are minimal, but for some, that causes them concern because it is, you know, could be a weeknight when we do the rodeo and things like that, so...
Wednesday and Saturday.
Yeah. One year, they did it all four nights, if you remember, a few years back. And I know we got a couple phone calls on that, so...
So Scott, I definitely agree with what you're saying as far as the state can set these parameters, but, you know, if they're saying the date's a week-long firework show, then, you know, how do we have much control over that? So I think we just need to reach out to the Utah League and City of Town and see if that's what we want, and the direction that we want to move. I think it's too long for both the 24th and the 4th.
Yeah, what I heard Representative Green alluding to is, if the cities want full control of fireworks in their city, and have the state step out of it, so we could control whether there's aerials or not, we can control the window in which they're lit off, and things like that, I think that would be good for us as a city, because some cities might have different ideas as to what's appropriate for fireworks. And so what's appropriate for Pinguich might not be appropriate for Pleasant Grove. And their citizens might have different concerns. And so when it's a statewide law, that's kind of how it happens. When it's, when cities are allowed to regulate, then we can listen to our citizens, and then we can act accordingly. But that's, and what Representative Green says is true. For us, for Pleasant Grove City to say, we want to have this happen, probably not going to happen if we work through the Utah League, and there's other cities that would like cities to have that control. And it might not be all of it. It might just be portions of it. I mean, it might be the time window. It might be the type, those types of things. So we all know the world changed when aerials were allowed. And it's a whole different world out there now, and it brings up those issues. So any other questions on that?
Just the point of, you know, because we're not an island, we have two neighboring cities.
Yeah.
We're going to have noise. They have Linden Days, they have, you know, Steel, what are they?
Steel Days. Well, and Cedar Hills, too. We have three neighbors.
So, you know, we would have to either work with a, you know, I just want the residents to understand that we can control, we could possibly control Pleasant Grove, but we still have neighbors who are not going to have the same ordinance.
Yeah, that's fair enough, if it gets to that point.
Right.
And we'll see if the legislatures can be willing to do something like that. And we just won't know that till early next year.
I need to apologize to Cedar Hills.
Big Scott.
Okay. If we can go back to item number six now, I know they've been waiting patiently for this public hearing.
So moving on to item six, public hearing to consider request of Kevin Ludlow for approval of a site plan in the Grove area. The proposed site plan is for a hotel on the property located at 416 South Evermore Lane in the Grove Zone Commercial Sales Sub District. Daniel.
Mayor Protem, Council, I am really excited today. I don't know if it's about the project or that karaoke speaker right there. Now, like I said, I always get excited about presenting new projects coming to the city, especially new commercial projects coming to the Grove area. Having Pleasant Grove being the destination of projects like this makes me feel like we're alive, like Pleasant Grove is kicking and is progressing, is heading into the right direction. The project that I'm presenting today, it's for a hotel. We're talking about 125 units, four-story hotel. The location of this proposed project is at 416 South Evermore Lane, and it's also located in the Grove Commercial Sub District. This area right there. That's the lot where the hotel is going to go. Thank you for the lights. Here's an aerial view of the place, of the exact location where the hotel will be. So the lot, this lot where the proposed project will be located, it's, right now, is 4.45 acres, and the project or the hotel will be located in the south portion of the lot. So right here in this intersection, in about 2.67 acres. The rest of the land, in other words, the land located at north, will be subdivided in the near future. And hopefully, that will be used for commercial retail or office uses as well. So like Ken mentioned before, this is the south portion of the lot, and this is the site plan of the proposed hotel. This is where the, is that the gas station, right? Yeah, this is where the gas station is. And here's the intersection. This is the entire perimeter of the actual lot, and this would be the location of the lot.
Have they just poured that road this week?
I don't know, the weekend, that's Marty.
Last week? So that, so that is, no, between the Holiday Day Oil and this property? Has that road been poured? Well, I know the pullout, so I'm trying to think. Okay, okay.
Thanks, Marty. Here's an aerial view, and kind of like, to show the approximate location of the building. So this solid area right here will be the building. These are the driveway and the landscape areas. So that will be the location of this proposed plant. Going back to the site plan a little bit, so above, or something around 31,000 square feet of this site, considering the lower part, the 2.67 acres, 31,000 square feet will be landscape. You guys can see, so the staff already reviewed the landscape, and it complies with the requirements we already have established in the ordinance. Now, there's a provision in the city code already established that city council, with the recommendation of the DRB, the Design Review Board, can reduce the landscape buffer around the perimeter of the site by no more than five feet, with the condition that the applicant provides in regards to architectural design and landscape amenities that exceed the requirements of the ordinance. So on August 2nd, almost a week ago, DRB reviewed these plans, and they forward a recommendation to the city council, a positive recommendation of approval for the reduction of the five-feet buffer, landscape buffer around the perimeter of the site. Okay? So people say that image is worth more than 10,000 words. Let's go to the images. So this is the elevation of the buildings. There we go. So again, colors, materials, architectural designs are not just compatible with the surroundings, but they also comply with the requirements already established in the code. Here's the image of the floor plan. One of the perks of this hotel is that the building will be providing about 2,600 square feet of space for meetings, kind of like it could be used for conferences or for small conventions. So I think it's the space around here, somewhere around here? Correct? Okay.
How many square feet of conference space?
2,600, approximately. So hopefully, again, soon, we can have a small convention with Pleasant Grove as the destination. Okay, so this is a couple images, again, of convention room type of location for this type of activities. It will end up looking something like that. That's the floor plan of the first, of the second floor. I didn't include images for the third and fourth, because they are parallel, or they're similar to this one. They're just replicated, the second, the third and the fourth floor. And there's a picture right there of the holes and how the project is going to be. So one of the things that happened during this process is that staff apply something that we call the Fast Track. The Fast Track program that we have allows a project from the submittal day to the completion to be, sorry about the redundancy, to be completed in less than five weeks. So that took tremendous effort from the engineering department, that I would like to recognize. Marty, Mario, and Matt, they did a great job. So we work on this project, and we finish, it's, we are done with the reviews. So this being the public hearing, staff recommends the city council to approve the proposed site plan with the, also with the recommendation from the Design Review Board to reduce the landscape setback buffer by five feet, and also, oh, sorry, with the condition that all the final planning, engineering, and fire department requirements are met.
And that's just in the model motion, I think you have that in there.
It is. It is. I rather...
Mayor Protem and Daniel, not to interrupt, but if we're asking the council to grant that exception, I think we need to point out, as a matter of the findings, which landscape and architectural features exceed the ordinance in order to justify the granting of the exception. And you kind of mentioned that it was nice, but let's get the details in there just to keep the record clear.
Perfect. Thank you. Tina always keeps me honest here. I like that. So the items presented that exceed the requirements, for example, is that the percentage of landscape area exceeds what's required. Okay, so the zone only requires 10% of the lot to be landscaped, and they're presenting more than 10%. So that's one of them. Another one is that, for example, right here in this area, where there's some parking areas, we increase the number of landscape items to form kind of like a screen protection. When people are driving, they won't just see the cars, but they will see some nice landscape right there. The number of trees also is more than what is required. And the materials and colors match exactly what the ordinance requires. Also, a couple of other elements were used in regards to helping with the setbacks. For example, we use averaging. If you guys can't, let me see where it's exactly. Right here, we're showing more landscape in these areas than right here. So we use a little bit of averaging in regards to that. So let me see, something else, Marty, that's skipping out of my head? Okay, so would that meet the requirements, Tina? What did you say? Okay, all right. And if maybe something's escaping, the applicant can call me out on that. Another item that is interesting that I love about this is that they're not only showing landscape on the perimeter, but also of the perimeter of the lot, but also on the perimeter of the building, all around. In regards to parking, they're not only given the minimum, but they're exceeding the required parking stalls by the ordinance. Okay?
Council, any questions for Daniel?
Sounds good.
Is the applicant here, Mr. Ludlow? Do we have any questions for him?
Looks awesome. We're excited to see it.
If you want, yeah.
It's just great to be in Pleasant Grove. I'm Kevin Ludlow. Our company is Sequoia Development. Russ Naylor from Nichols Naylor Architecture is here, and my development manager, Ashley, and our construction VP, Rich. We're excited to be here. I just want to thank Daniel, and Marty, and Matt, and the staff. They've been terrific to work with. They should be commended. We hope to do the Hyatt Hotel. If any of you stayed in a Hyatt, you know, it's just a little cut above everything else. And we own three currently, and, three currently, and so we love the brand. We love the people. The people from Hyatt are great people. It's an international company. And happy to answer any questions.
No questions.
Thank you. This is exciting. This is a public hearing, so we'll open it up at this time to the public. Please come forward and state your name.
Carrie Hammond. Did you give me Carrie Hammond? I listened to the whole thing just because I wanted to know more. So that's why I came tonight, because I wanted to know more about what this project is all about. And my big question right off the top is, why do you want less green space? Why five feet less landscaping? Because that's what I understood. Am I correct in understanding that?
Daniel, you want to?
Are we talking five feet around the whole project?
Yes. It's not all around the project. It's in certain areas. So right now, the setback, it's 25 feet. And because not all the lots are just a square, where you can fit your building in the middle, and then your landscape and parking all around it, because there's some perks and different shapes of lots, then the ordinance allows for you to, for example, reduce that by five feet, but then come up with certain other, kind of like compensate that somewhere else. And that's kind of like what the applicant did. So they remove it from there, and they put it around the building. Now, it's not saying that it's just a free pass for everyone, right? So you like, again, because of the shape of the lot and the way you design things, sometimes things don't play always like you want it. So you have that wiggle room to play around, but no more than five feet. It's not like someone says, the setback's 25, I'm going to go back to 10 just because I don't want to spend money on landscape. That's not the idea, is to help the developer... That's not the idea, is to help the developer accomplish the high quality requirements for landscape, but also allow for some room to, to design.
Okay. So, that satisfies me. And then my other concerns were with parking, which I think you addressed, and if there's convention space, then that parking is a real issue. Typically, hotel guests aren't creating a lot of traffic, they're using Lyft, Uber, taxis, whatever, shuttles. But if they're going to do conventions, then that's an issue with traffic and adequate parking. So, if they're having less landscaping, more parking, and it's going to be adequate, then okay. And then I just, the other concern in this whole area, just with the hotel in Evermore and the void and the Grove and the traffic and getting on and off those, that freeway, like I do that every day. I have to get on that freeway every morning and it's like nothing's even actually there yet. And it's already, there's one road there where if you have to get out of there in the morning, forget it, you're not getting out of there. And if you're getting out of there, then nobody, North County Boulevard is getting to Pleasant Grove Boulevard. It's already a highly congested area, so my hope is that y'all plan for that because it's already hard to get on and off the freeway right there. If you have to do it in the morning, you know what I'm talking about.
Marty, can you address that really quick?
Well, there, there are a lot of things and obviously, North County Boulevard, Pleasant Grove Boulevard, to the west of North County Boulevard, it's all owned by UDOT and they currently are working on plans to adjust concepts of the interchange, widening of the road, both on North County and also the section between the interchange and Pleasant Grove Boulevard. There's a lot of things in discussion now, some plans are being laid for the next couple of years to really do some enhancements on that main section. And then there's an overall concept for kind of a build out. We know that it's congested now, we've got a lot of development coming and-
That's all already spilling over into State Street, 1100 North, all of the alternates.
All of those things are-
When something happens, it's impossible to go anywhere.
So they, they are looking at those different aspects of the traffic congestion in that area currently and then ways to enhance that for future development. So, it's not being forgotten, it's not something that we're being reactive to, we're being a little bit proactive in trying to determine what, what's needing to be done to try to help that not be a problem.
So all these things are great for Pleasant Grove and yay, go, but I, I hope those things are being addressed.
Thank you Carrie. Anyone else? Okay, with that said, we'll close the public hearing at this time and bring it back up here to the council. Any further discussion? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Well, before that, sorry, Tina, we had the five foot on there, do they need to add anything else?
The findings, yeah, I think I can make an adequate motion.
Okay.
So, I'll make the motion that we approve the site plan in the Grove area for Kevin Ludlow's proposed hotel on the property located at 416 South Evermore Lane in the Grove Zone Commercial Sales Sub District, with an exception for the setbacks based upon a specific finding as represented by our city staff, that there is more than the required landscaping throughout the entire project and that there's more than adequate parking based on the ordinance as well. And all subject to the design and planning and engineering and fire requirements as recommended.
So we have a motion by Ben.
Second.
Second by Diana. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Welcome.
Yeah.
Congratulations, thank you.
I suppose a hug is inappropriate.
Okay. Let's see, we'll skip back down to, I think we're on item eight, discussion on development in the Grove. Scott?
I want to give a little history and I don't know, Marty or Daniel, did you guys have a map for the interchange zone that we could use as a reference? Okay, okay, right there, that's, that's, okay, let me give you a little history on the area here. This is history within the last five or six years. As we have looked at this interchange zone, ever since the interchange has gone in, this has been the area of great focus from our city officials on the future development of that area. Just want to make sure everybody understands, as a city, we control zoning and we can control design standards, but we don't control who owns the property, we don't control what they choose to do with it as long as it meets the zoning, we don't get to choose what brands are coming in or, you know, if somebody's going to build office, we don't necessarily get to choose who's going to use that office, we just control the zoning aspect of that. There was a time where there was, particularly to this property here, there was somebody that was interested in using and building all office space right there. And that was a concern to the city. This is always what we regard as the Hammond's property for the last 10 years, which if developed according to the agreement would be a full-service hotel, convention center, limited service hotel and two national chain restaurants. That's what they're contractually obligated to provide. So this, this, and for Hammond's to develop all that, it's not going to take all 50 acres that they have, that would probably take more of that area there, but that would all be retail in nature. And so retail is something we talk about quite often as a city mainly because not only do we get the property tax on the building, we also get sales tax of anything that's generated. And sales tax is our largest amount of tax that we collect as a city. So, for cities, they're going to fight over sales tax, they're going to fight over retail, that's, that's kind of what we do. So as this was being proposed, we talked about it with the city council and it came back, in fact, it was this here, can you go to the, oh, sorry, I guess I haven't. It was area one, two and three, and this area used to be included in that as well. All four of those areas were going to be required to provide 50% retail and 50% office, at least 50% retail. If they wanted to develop 100% retail, we were okay with that, but they needed to bring at least 50% retail. So that was a decision we made and we changed the zoning five or six years ago to accommodate that. Just in general, one thing that we find, that when we zone things as a city, whoever ends up developing the property, a lot of times they'll come back and ask for changes to the zoning because they have a specific need they're trying to meet. And the city doesn't have, we don't have to change the zoning, that's, that's up to us. A lot of times we'll work with the developer on what that means and we've, we've already done that on this property right here. It used to be a 50/50. It was determined that it was a poor location for retail because there's no way to get to it right here. So it was a left turn, a left turn and a left turn to get there. And so that made sense to us as a city that, okay, we're not going to require that to be retail or 50% retail, so we'll, we'll let that develop. And that's the site right now of the Grove Tower. This is being developed right now, section one, so we have a couple of single-story office and then the rest of that are retail pads or, or pads, I guess, as far as with the intent of putting retail there. So that's developing in conjunction with the vision. And then we have items two and three here, or properties two and three, which are owned by St. John Properties and those are properties right now that are zoned to require the 50% retail. So with all that being said, we have the developer, St. John Properties, who called me on Thursday with a question to see if the city would entertain something. With that being said, the developer's not here tonight, he's out of town and this is not something that when we talked on Thursday was on our agenda, it was something that came up after the developer went on vacation. So the developer's aware that we're having a discussion about this tonight, but obviously because they're gone, they're not able to come and represent their point of view. So I want to do my best to represent what our conversation was and I hope I get it right, so that, I just want to make sure that I'm representing the developer and kind of what they were saying in an appropriate manner. So I received a phone call, there was a sense of urgency that on this, particularly right here, that there is a company that wants to come and build their corporate office right there. This company also, really what they do is they manage restaurants. And so, that's something that we would love to have in our community would be restaurants. As they've, we've, we've been talking with this company for a few months now, they've looked at other sites in Pleasant Grove. They've also been looking at other sites outside of Pleasant Grove. They had a site in Linden at one time and they have a site in Lehigh that they have been considering. So in our discussions, we've always been very forthright in saying, you know, let's get you to come to Pleasant Grove and let's see what we can figure out to have that happen. This, this corporation, they, so we have a restaurant here, R&amp;R Barbecue, that is, they're still in their development process right now, that would locate here. This was, this site was set aside for a hotel that we had been talking to through the developer. The developer had been working with a hotel that wanted to come on this site here and as of a couple of weeks ago, they backed out and, and chose not to come here, at least for the time being. And there's a myriad of issues behind that. But with that, the developer was counting on that to be counted as retail. A hotel counts as retail for us, we get sales tax off of the room nights, so that was going to count towards retail and they have a restaurant here that was going to count towards retail and that was something that they were expecting and hoping for. So the developer says, well, now that this, the company that has the corporate office, that's their preferred site right there. And what the developer represented is they're looking at here and they're also pretty hot on a site in Lehigh. And the developer's request was, if we go here, we would like that corporate office to count as retail, even though it's office in use. There, there won't be any retail sold out of that, that building. As, I mean, as I was mulling that in my mind and as I emailed the city council to let them know, initially it was like, hey, we need to know like right away. And my response was, we, we can't give you an answer to that, that's a city council policy call, that's not a call that I can make as a city administrator. And our next meeting's on Tuesday and we'll put it on the agenda and we'll talk about it then. So, this company, if they were to bring with them a couple of restaurant concepts to go here in the retail space, that might be something we would consider to say, alright, we'll count this as retail if you deliver some other retail with your development. I talked to the vice president over development for the company on Friday morning and they said they have a master plan for this area as far as their corporate office and then the restaurant concepts. He was going to try to get that to me as soon as it was done, it wasn't done by our meeting tonight, so I don't have that, but in essence, he was saying that, you know, the corporate office would be here, they already own this restaurant here and then potentially a, and I don't know how many, two, three, four sites, I don't know that number. So what, what we have in front of us is a request by the developer. It's not the request of the corporation because they don't, it doesn't, that doesn't, that 50/50 requirement doesn't matter to them, it does matter to the developer and the owner of the land. And so, as, as I've looked at it, as we've looked at it as staff, we just need to decide, I mean, so if we say yes, then we have to understand that as this develops out, it could end up being 55/45, 55% office, 45% retail. If we say no, we could lose that corporation to Lehigh or somewhere else, they could choose to go elsewhere. Whether they would still do other restaurant concepts there, we don't know the answer to that, if they were to leave. So that's, I think, what's on the table. If, if we do say no, this land eventually will be sold, or sold or leased, whatever the developer chooses to do. Whether it be office or retail, we don't know, I mean, that's kind of crystal ball type stuff. So I think what's in front of the council and what we need to decide or discuss is what the inclination is to say yes or no on whether that counts as retail, even though it would be a corporate office. And then if there are certain things that we say, we're okay with that, but we want to have a few other things that come along with that, then we could entertain what some of those conditions would be and then we, we as staff could go back and negotiate a development agreement with them. So that's kind of the background and the history, is there, I don't think I've missed anything, is there any questions that you have before we deliberate?
Yes, two.
Okay.
Explain to me the fast casual restaurant and isn't the corporate office, don't they do a cat, isn't there some kind of a sale of franchises and stuff like that that are going to be originating out of that building and wouldn't that be a-
So, we don't get sales tax on the, on a franchise, them franchising a restaurant, that's not a retail component.
Okay.
That's another type of transaction.
Is a corporate?
Yeah.
Okay.
So there would be no sales tax on that. Back to the first question, good question, that is something that I missed, that is, kind of plays into this. When we talked about the zoning of this area, the interchange zone, there was a point where we had a fast food restaurant that wanted to go right here. And that was causing some heartburn as this is the gateway to our community. So we had a discussion about zoning out fast food and convenience stores. As you look at our code and you try to now define fast food, fast casual, quick serve, sit down, I mean, restaurants have changed a little bit in the last few years. The quick serve or the fast casual is now the majority of restaurants that you see. So a brand name that would be considered a fast casual would be like a Costa Vida or something like that. So it's the sit-down restaurant or the full service is when you sit down at your table and they come and take your order, that one's pretty well defined. But fast casuals now have drive-throughs and there's, you know, and there's fast food concepts that are pretty close. And so, we had the developer approach us and say, to think that he has 60 acres of property here and there's not going to be one fast food restaurant on there is probably not realistic. And we talked about this a few weeks ago with you and, and recommended that we sit down and figure out a way to allow some fast food in this area. And this is something that will be on the agenda in a couple of weeks. So we've written an ordinance that will be reviewed by the planning commission, which will consider allowing roughly one fast food restaurant per 10 acres. And so in the 60 acres, they would be allowed six fast food restaurants. And then also, one convenience store per 20 acres or something like that. So that they would have, there'd be a few fast food restaurants in there and there would be a couple of convenience stores, which would be consistent. If you drive around where there's a major retail, you'll see that there's a mix of the, of the fast food and the fast casual and that type of stuff. The, the R&amp;R restaurant here-
Is considered what?
I would say fast casual.
Okay.
I mean, it's, so we defined fast food so that it was clear to the developer and clear to the city. And again, you'll see this in a couple of weeks, but in essence, a fast food is if more than 50% of their business is through the drive-through, that's what's considered fast food.
Okay.
Anything less than that, so there are some fast casuals that have a drive-through, but there's still majority of their business is people coming in, ordering, sitting down and eating or taking out. So we're going to define that and that was at the request of the developer and as we looked at it, we felt like that made some sense to that. So I would say as a city, we're trying to work with the development, trying to hold to a vision that we have as a community as to how we want that to develop, but also giving the developer a little bit of flexibility to actually develop their property. So that, in, in essence, that's a separate issue and that's something that will be addressed separately from, from what's being asked here, because what's being asked right now is really subject to one particular company that would like to locate in our community.
Okay, so what was the option three of the development agreement? Remind me that.
Well, if, to bring this business here-
If we say to staff, if we say to staff, so how did that go?
Well, one was, yes, you can do it.
Right.
Just straight up, yes. Two was no, just a straight up no. Three was a negotiated deal where we'll allow that to count as retail, but there's some things that were- Three was a negotiated deal where we'll allow that to count as retail, but there's some things that we're going to require. There's some conditions on our end that you needed to deliver on if we're going to allow that to count as retail.
Any other questions for Scott?
How many acres is this corporate headquarters?
I'm not quite sure because we haven't seen a site plan.
Right. I'm just wondering what percentage of this?
So this property right here is 40 acres.
Right.
And if that was four acres, we're talking 10%.
Right. We don't know it's four acres. We don't know.
No, I don't.
Okay.
Yeah, like I said, we haven't seen.
If the hotel was two and a half, what was the hotel? Two and a half, 2.6?
Yeah.
So it's not going bigger than a hotel.
Well, the hotel was going up though, quite a ways. I don't know about the footprint.
Yeah.
And it could be, it could be two acres. I, I don't, like I said, we haven't seen a site plan, so I don't know what their plans are for that.
I think you're pretty close saying it's going to move it from 45 to 55 percentage. It's going to be close in there.
Yeah.
So the council just has to decide if they're okay.
Yeah.
With that, with some either stipulations or straight up yes.
Well, and I'm just going to throw out an opinion if that's okay. Uh, when we, when you, when I look at this and when it's all fully developed, there's going to be all kinds of stuff in there. There's going to be office, there's going to be retail, there's going to be fast food, there's going to be fast casual. Hopefully there's a couple of sit-down restaurants in there.
Do you see Outback in there?
Well, I, I don't know.
Boots Chris Steakhouse?
Not that visionary. But, uh, the idea is, um, number one, the market's going to dictate what's going to go in there. So if there is a hot retail market, that's going to fill up with retail pretty quick. If the retail market's a little slow, then that property might take a few years to develop. And this is again, what a developer has to weigh against is, you know, they, they, there's, they want to develop. The quicker they can get leases, the quicker they can sell property and get development in there, the quicker they start getting their money back from their, their initial investment. Now, is that the responsibility of the city to make sure that the developer gets all their money back? It, it's not. And so I see this really as a partnership when we're talking with developers and how they want to use their land and the, uh, ability we have to control zoning, sometimes it's a little bit of a dance. And so we've done, we've done that dance a little bit. We've changed the zoning here. We're now allowing, uh, some limited fast food here. And so, uh, if, if we say, okay, this is now going to be, um, an office building, but we're going to count it as retail and it shifts that once that's fully developed to a 55/45, is that going to cause us some pain? I don't know. Is the developer going to come back in three years and say, I can't get any retail here. I need this all to be office? That, that could happen. I, I don't know. I don't even know if the developer knows that. If we get, uh, the Hammond's company to proceed on their property, that's all retail there. I mean, that's, that's wonderful. No idea what Hammond's has planned for the, this part of their property. And then talking with UDOT and some of their future plans of possibly reconstructing an interchange and maybe having a little bit of access here, all of a sudden this becomes a little bit more viable for retail. But that might be 10 years from now or 15 years from now. So it's kind of hard to, really for us as a city to make any plans as far as how that's going to affect that property or the developer for that matter. They want to be developed before 10 years is up, I'm sure. So that's, I mean, there's, man, there's so many moving parts. There's a lot of things I think to consider. And I think all we need to do is kind of have a discussion as to how the council feels so that I can go back to the developer and say, you know, here's what we're thinking. And, and we can give them direction, uh, so we can proceed.
Okay. Council?
I think, I feel like I need more information and a development agreement might help me get to where I need to be. But I, I think we're getting quality projects withholding to the 50/50. But if it will bring in some more restaurants, I just need some more specifics. And I don't feel like I have that right now. So I think a development agreement would help.
Yeah, we don't have that right now.
I just, I, I can't say yes just based off of just.
The limited information we have.
Correct. So if we want to go into, I'm open to a discussion for a development agreement and tying retail into that. But standing alone on its own right now, I, I don't feel like that's in the best interest of the community without having retail component attached to that.
And, and so this little bit of the hard part, and this is where we, uh, if we kick it back to say, okay, talk about a development agreement. Um, when I talked to them Thursday, there was a sense of urgency that if we don't do something here in the next week, that they're going to Lehigh. Now, I, I, I just don't know. And the developer, the developer's not here to represent the, that sense of urgency. Um, and so if, if the direction is, uh, go back and work on a development agreement, uh, we can go back. Just understand that one of the risks could be, we don't have time for that. We're going to go develop somewhere else. Now, whether that's the case or not, I, I just don't know. But that's, I just want to convey what was represented to me.
That's okay. That's okay. Because personally I'm willing to take that chance because that's a prime piece of property. And if we don't have the details, I, I just think that we need to work together and I don't feel, I think it's a little bit, you know.
Yeah.
I mean, uh, so I, I need more details. I think a development agreement, I, I know that they may be in a rush, but at the city council, we can't be because we're planning for the lifetime of that exit. And we can't rush our decisions based off of, you know, I think some limited information. So I'd be willing to, to hopefully, if, if it works out, great. And if it doesn't, you know, I definitely want to work with them. But I don't want to be put in a rush situation and make a decision that won't be on the best interest of the citizens. So.
Completely fair.
When is, when is Daniel back in town? Did he say?
I think, uh, Monday next week.
So I think the percentages that we're looking at are just so close. And with 100, I mean, with 100% retail on that, Hammond's, um.
So let me take a step back. We're not guaranteed that that project's going to happen.
But as of right now?
Sure. As of today.
Bond payment made?
They're, they're keeping, uh, all their, uh, agreements as far as the contract, but for actually building. They've, you know, they've been paying us 1.5 million a year to cover that bond payment. So, uh, I, and, and so maybe I, and I need to be a little careful what I'm saying here because this is what's planned. What's going to happen, I don't think anybody knows at this point, but that, that was what was planned for that to be 100% retail in there.
So out of the 60, how many does, how many acres does Saint John have? 62?
Well, they have, so they have 40 here. They have roughly 10 here.
Yeah.
Um, and they have roughly 10 here.
And we're talking about two acre, two or three acres of a company that owns restaurants.
Well, it's two or three.
I think it's good.
It's two or three acres, but it's directly off the most probably, I'd say the prime piece of property in the entire city.
But we also know that he wants to bring his portfolio here.
But that's what I want to see before we tell them it's a go. And so if we can have that discussion and make us some development agreement, I mean, I, I mean, I agree, but that's prime. I mean, and to not have sales tax generated right now, I mean, if we just say yes, go ahead and there's no retail tie to that. Yes, it's only two acres out of the 60, but it's two acres of prime property that we, we need every square inch that we can get in that area for sales tax if we are going to bring our city up to the level that other communities are. And that standalone building as a office building will not do that for us. So I would, I would love that group here because we've met with them and they're a great corporation. But we need that retail and it's nothing against them. It's for our citizens that we have to have that retail component. So, and I'm so glad that we changed that to 50/50 because we can get that into our, we have to have that. We need it, that tax base. So.
You taught, you had a limited discussion. Was there any mention about future projects from them?
Yeah. I mean, uh, when it was presented to me, my reply was, is well, can they deliver some restaurants? And the developer says, in essence, I can't promise that because it's not him building them.
I think you talked to the actual.
Yeah. No, their intent would be to build some. They would master plan that. That, I asked, I said, can you shoot me a copy of that master plan so I can show the city council that if you're going to build your corporate here and you've got a couple of spots here for a couple of restaurants, I'd love to be able to show that. So they weren't able to get that to me, but that's what they portrayed. Now, uh, a concept plan doesn't.
Are they buying or are they leasing? Are they buying this land from Daniel?
I don't know that.
Okay.
And I, and I don't know if that really matters. I mean, if they're going to invest, uh, tens of millions of dollars to build their corporate headquarters there, then.
That's between them and Daniel, right?
It is, uh, you know, as far as that's concerned. And I, I'm sure Diana's talking about permanency and.
Yes.
And, uh, you know, commitment as far as those things are concerned. But e- even the developer right now is talking conceptually. I mean, or not the develop, the, the proper, the corporation, I mean, they're talking conceptually. They're, are they willing to put something in writing that they're going to deliver a couple of restaurants? I, I don't know. We didn't. We didn't have that discussion.
But I feel like that's what we need to know. And I'm not saying this specifically to you, Scott. I'm just saying, I feel like that's what we need to know in order to make a decision on prime property that should be sales tax generating. So I, I just, I need the facts and I just don't feel like I have those at this time. But I'm willing to enter into a development or at least entertain a development agreement. So we know what's kind of going on with that property. And I really want that corporation here, but I want sales tax.
I'm hearing.
I'm not disagreeing with you.
I know.
Hearing a development agreement.
There's no one else to look at.
Yeah.
I've seen, I'm hearing one development agreement. Diana's fairly okay with it. Ben? I mean, you're looking for some kind of direction here.
Well, so if, if I'm going to, uh, call up the developer on Monday and say, our city council had discussion and they're, um, giving us direction to allow that to happen, we're still going to have to, uh, either amend the ordinance or enter into a development, uh, agreement. But they're going to want to know, um, where we're at so that they, so that he can go back. The developer can tell the, the company, okay, the city's going to work with me on this one. So we can work with you on getting you here.
Tina?
Um, Scott actually made part of my comment. I would just wanted to remind the council that we probably will have to have a development agreement anyway if, if we're going to do this because we're going to have to clarify that we're going to create an exception to the requirement and why. So in terms of timing, the other thing is, is the developer's gone for a week. So nothing's going to be happening until he gets back anyway. I can't imagine that he wouldn't give us a couple of days to, to work it out.
I would hope. I just don't know the answer to that.
I, I just wanted to make the council aware that a development agreement is probably going to be necessary either way. Whether you say yes, no conditions, or whether you say yes with conditions.
Yeah, but I, I guess to follow on, if they feel that a majority of the council is heading towards a certain direction, I think that if they have some urgency on their part, they might be willing to act based on, uh, in essence, uh, you know, it's not guaranteed until the council takes a vote and says, this is the agreement. There's nothing guaranteed. But that's going to be their call on how they're going to react to that. And so I, I, I think that's where we're at. I think that they just probably want an idea of what the council expects.
Lynn?
This part of the council thinks we can work something out with them. So, uh, I wish you could get them to come to the table and let's talk about it a little.
So you're more, uh, aligned with where Sid is that we sit down and we say, if we're going to give you this, we want a couple of things in return?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and I'm comfortable with, with what I've been hearing. I mean, I've been a great advocate for this company and for this project in general. But I do recognize the concern about a, a slow erosion of our protections for the public and our expectations of a vision of certain amount of retail. So I would, uh, yeah, I'd be open to having that extended conversation. I do think we need to expect things, specific things in return, whether that's a certain number of restaurants in a development agreement or some other kind of commitment. That would be, that would be an easier pill to swallow, as it were.
And I think Daniel will be okay with that. I think he's very reasonable. And so coming back to you, Diana, you're okay with that line?
Yes.
Okay, and I am too. So there you go.
Okay. So the direction I'm hearing is that I will get ahold of the developer, let them know the council's willing to entertain a development agreement. Then between staff and then we can start putting that, those parameters together and bring something back to you that, um, we feel that would, would be a little bit of a trade-off. There would be conditions for us to granting that to be, um, retail, considered retail. Now, since we don't, we wouldn't consider retail, we would just change the percentage or change whatever. We're not going to deem something that's office retail, but if you understand the concept.
Yep. Thank you, Scott. Um, item number nine, review and discussion of August 22nd meeting, Jen. I don't have, just. In the works. Okay.
How far, far away?
Number 10, neighborhood and staff and council business, Libby, anything? Daniel, anything else?
Uh, no.
Well, that was anticlimactic. Okay, Morty, help us out.
We've got a few things, uh, happening in the construction world still. The walker tank is moving forward. Um, with that, they're working on the floor slab of the tank. And we'll be doing, uh, a couple of pores over the next six weeks or so. Just to make you aware, we, uh, need some, uh, a noise variance essentially so that we can get to work early, uh, on some pores because of the heat. Typically, we need to start as early as possible so that the concrete doesn't start setting up too early before we can be able to get it placed and worked. Eric, I'll be giving you one of those tonight that you can sign. That's just a, a permit so that they can start around, they'll be starting around 5:00 AM. Uh, the conditions of that are that we're notifying all the surrounding residents 24 hours in advance. And then we'll have it posted on our construction update website for everybody else. But, um, those, that'll only happen four or five times over the next, uh, about six weeks as they do those pores. They're very large pores. They take five to six hours of constant trucks coming and pumping to the side. So, uh, that'll, the first pore is going to happen on Friday. Uh, I think there'll be the next pore on Tuesday. Then there'll be some time as they reset up the forms and reinforcement. And then, uh, up to about four or five pores to finish out, uh, through the end of September. So, um, anyway, just to make the council aware of that, if you hear anything of that, uh, we are notifying the residents to make sure they're aware of that and we'll keep the noises limited as possible as we can. So. Um, and then 700 South, uh, 900 South are the two big projects, uh, really under a lot of construction, a lot of, uh, cones and, and, uh, traffic control happening there. So, uh, we're still moving forward. Great progress being made on those. Still looking at, uh, projects being completed around the middle of October. So we still got a little bit of time to go, but now you'll start seeing the road excavation happen. We've got a lot of the utilities in. We're now going to start seeing some of the roads go back together. So, um, some good things happening there. Uh, just a quick update on First East as well. Um, just received 60% design plans for First East this week. And we're working on some things with that. We've had a few questions asked in the open house about some sewer, uh, up at 2600 North. And we're still working on that, uh, to determine how to best do that and fund that and other things of that nature for a couple of residents on the east side of First East that don't currently have access to sewer, whether or not it makes sense to do now or at some future date. So we're still working on that and we'll bring that forward when it's ready to present to you. Um, but things are moving forward and I think they're planning to bid that project in October. And, uh, should be, uh, potential some work during the winter and then really hitting it strong, uh, come spring and all summer long. So it's, it's going to be a long project and, uh, but will be a great project to have behind us. So.
How are they going to move traffic when they do that?
Uh, that'll be something that will be discussed. They, they really have 48 feet of pavement in most of it. Typically you need about 20 feet wide to get two lanes. So it'll be greatly restricted, reduced to probably two lanes. But I would assume that they'll maintain wherever possible, uh, traffic flow in, in both direction. So maybe half width construction, construct one side, shift it over to the other side, similar to what we're doing on 700 South, uh, to try to do that. That's not something that, again, we haven't gotten to that level yet. The contractor county will be discussed. Uh, I'm sure there will be detours at times, uh, to get to traffic through the areas. But, uh, that'll, you'll get more information as we get going on that project.
So how, how much will they be working on a portion of the road at a time? Like they're not going to dig up the whole.
Five miles is the limits. No, just kidding. No, I think we, we talked about that at our last meeting. I think they were talking around 2,000 feet. So four or five block sections.
At a time.
At a time. They may, they may also do multiple crews where they do five blocks here and then maybe up the road a couple of miles, they do another five block or 2,000 foot section. So there are some of those, uh, I guess, uh, details of that haven't been worked out. But they will limit the area to a certain area, um, and have it put back together before they move forward. But, uh, it needs to be reasonable as well so they can have a big enough, big enough area to, to move on the project. So. Whereas that's, that's what I.
David?
Yeah, really excited. This Thursday, 5:00 PM in downtown park, we have the Pleasant Grove Summer Bration. And if you haven't heard about all the details, it, uh, will include lots of food options, food trucks, some food vendors, lots of. It's going to be there. Um, I know in the past, the Promenade vendor market had lots of different vendors. Um, this is really. vendors. This is really localized and focused on handcrafted products. It's not the direct marketing or other types of vendors that you see. It's definitely local flair there, which is gonna be great. We have over 50 vendors that are scheduled to come. And we'll have live entertainment, live band that will be playing music throughout the park throughout the evening. But the thing that's really neat about this, that I, that I think will set it apart from those same types of elements that used to be in the promenade, is that there, the kids' activities and the kid's zone is really, really beefed up. There's gonna be lots of stuff for families to do and for kids to do. You'll be able to come and just hang out in the park and have fun and have food and, and really have a good time. And so, Ryanne, who's been working on that and is the event manager, she's put a ton of time into it. This is as organized as any event that I think we do at this scale. So, she's really, she's really put a lot into it, and it's really being managed well from an organizational standpoint. So, I really hope that, I hope that people come and enjoy it, because it's gonna be a great event. So, Thursday, 5 to, 5 to dark.
5 to dark. Awesome. Thank you. Dionne?
Nothing.
You actually have something to discuss about the chamber luncheon that happened. Maybe you can give us a little bit on that. Blair Giles talked.
Was I there?
You were there.
[laughing]
Almost second row.
It was, it was a pretty night, neat event. Blair did get up and explained the Choose Kindness initiative and the first project that we'll be doing with the Discovery Park and rediscovering Discovery Park. So, it was, it was well taken, I think, from the organization. It was actually a tri-city, or tri-chamber type of event. So, there was a ton of Lehigh businesses and, and American Fork. It was, it was a good, good event.
Thank you. Chief Thomas, you've been in the news just a little bit.
I just have one thing. If you remember a couple, or a couple of months ago, we actually received a grant from Firehouse Subs for a Lucas CPR, auto CPR machine. They're actually holding an event on the 22nd, Tuesday, the 22nd, over at their American Fork store to kind of finalize all that and make that all public. They have newspaper people there, blah, blah, blah. We'll go over. We'd love to invite you, any of you, to come over and join us around 10 o'clock, 10:00 AM on the 22nd.
Similar to like last year?
Yeah.
Okay.
Very much. That's all.
Thank you.
Nothing.
Okay. Sherry?
We had electricians show up. Is this working? We had electricians show up at the library to start looking at the power situation for the elevator. So, it, we finally have a little bit of movement on that. And speaking of movement, we've been moving books to try to get them out of the way of construction. So, that's going to be a big job. And the library's gonna look really crowded for a few months, but all worth it.
Denise? Scott?
I do have a couple things.
Okay.
Just got a text from our developer who watched our meeting in Virginia.
I knew it.
You wanna say hi to Daniel?
[laughing]
He, we're, we'll talk Monday. And he, so he listened to the presentation, and he's hopeful we can get something worked out fairly soon. He did remind me, the urgency is on the corporation's part, not necessarily on his part. They're the ones kind of putting pressure on him to, to do some things. So, we'll, I, me and the developer and, and our company, corporation, we need to sit down and see what we can get worked out. So, just so you know, there, we'll, we'll get moving on that one. The other thing is just logistics on future meetings. So, our next meeting's August 22nd. We are planning on holding that in the library. Now, this building will still be standing on August 22nd, but we're moving the sound system out. We're, we're making the transition to the library for council meetings. The planning commission will be meeting in the senior center, because the library is being, that area's being used on Thursday nights in the library. So, we will start having our meetings. Our next meeting will be there. Now, we're hoping to have the sound system all set up and working. We're hoping to have the live stream all set up and working. If for some reason, we don't have the live stream set up, we're hoping for our first meeting in September that we will have it going. Just remind people, if they wanna, if we don't have the live stream working, we are recording these. The audio is available if people want to listen, so that if, if they are inclined, that is available to them. With that being said, and I, I've been here seven, just over seven and a half years, every city, not every city council. Most city council meetings I've had have been here in this room. I've been to quite a few city council chambers, just in other city halls, or I've worked for other cities. This one is unique, and, and it has a charm to it. It's one of the smaller ones I've ever been into. And that manifests itself if we have a meeting that generates some interest from the public. A lot of times we run out of room.
Scott, do you happen, or does anyone know how long they've been meeting in this building?
I don't know. Tina, would you?
I do if I could think about it. It was in the Mayor Sanderson's administration about a year to two years into his term. Before that, we actually met in the Little Theater in the library.
So, it was originally on Main Street, on that, in the building on the east side of Main Street, and then you moved to the Little Theater?
Uh-huh. Well, I wasn't here for that.
Okay.
Thanks. Anyway.
[laughing]
I'm old, but I'm not that old.
And then, so when would you say Mayor Sanderson, when was that?
Um, it would have been probably 99 or 2000 when we moved over here. His, I think he started in 97.
Okay, so about 18 years.
Yeah, we've been here.
Okay.
So, with that being said, we're asking for a little patience for the next year. It's just not gonna be ideal. The library is gonna, we're gonna be able to get through a year's worth of meetings, but it might be a little awkward in there sometimes as far as the setup and how we're operating. So, we are just asking for a little patience. The, the new city council chambers will be fantastic, and there'll be plenty of room and, you know, good sound system and, and good audio visual, I think, so that everybody can follow along, whether we're streaming or whether they're here in the building.
The question is, are we bringing over these same chairs?
We've been asked that. And as far as this is concerned, we haven't answered that question. For the library, I don't think so. We have chairs over there, yeah.
You already have chairs over there?
[inaudible]
There are certain things that.
They're probably more humble.
Yeah. The chairs being one of them, desks like this, the dais, we are gonna put in storage for the time being until we know in our new building what it's gonna look like and, and what we can change out and what we can't. And so, we'll be clearing this stuff out and just hanging on to it as far as that's concerned. I did email you a timeline. We'll be having a walkthrough on August 15th for the demolition of the buildings. August 22nd is when the bids will be due. It will be handled by our general contractor. They will be the ones that will be awarding the bid. And the timeline will be soon thereafter. So, whether that's right at the end of August or early September, we don't know that yet because we asked the contractors, give us your best price. And we, if we have to move the date a week to get the best price, then we'll move the date. So, we did put a date that September 1st would be ideally before, down before then. But just so you know, that's, that could be at play.
It will be in the basement until the elevator is done, probably December. And then it'll be upstairs in the program space.
The council meetings, right?
Yes, the council meetings.
Okay.
So, we are celebrating tonight and saying thank you to this building and this council chambers for the many memories we probably all have. Probably everybody in this room has a few memories or two regarding this. We have ordered a Costco cake. It looks like with the amount of people in here, that everybody gets about a quarter of that cake. For some reason, there's a basketball on there. Do you know why, Kathy?
[inaudible]
The celebration of this room here.
Well done.
It does say thanks for the memories on it. So, we, we're trying to think of something that wasn't cheesy, and obviously, we didn't, couldn't do that. So, but we, we do want to have a little bit of a celebration for.
[inaudible]
For this building.
Scott, I, I want a group picture, though, before everyone leaves.
You know, that's a great idea.
Like in front of, right here.
Yeah. I mean, we had our, our history guy, and if we get away with having a meeting here.
You'd be upset.
Yeah. I mean, we need to document the occasion.
So, any of the public that's here too, if you want to be in this moment in history?
Let's all gather as soon as we adjourn the meeting. Let's gather, and then we'll slice up some cake.
All right. Kathy, do you have anything?
Oh.
Oh, Tina, sorry. Okay. I didn't mean to leave you out. Kathy?
I'm doing it.
Okay.
You probably need a microphone so people can hear that. I, I might have people watching the screen. They need to hear exactly.
One more time.
All right.
So, August, is this working?
Just talk right in.
Try. There we go. August 15th is the primary election. We will be having this election service center at city hall for those, if you have problems with your ballot or have issues that you want questioned or answered, or if you just want to drop your ballots off there, not mail them in, you're more welcome to do that.
Kathy, what, I've had a couple people that didn't receive a ballot yet, and they haven't been able to get ahold of the county. Can they come in on that day into a provisional ballot?
Yes, they can.
Okay.
Yep. It's for, and we'll open at 7:00 AM and close at 8:00 PM on the dot.
What about those that are really wanting a "I voted" sticker?
You can come in and get an "I voted" sticker.
Well, and a reminder that, sorry, August 29th, we will canvass the election. So, we will have a council meeting that evening with that one agenda item. So, just make sure that's on your calendar.
Promise?
I, I promise, yes.
[inaudible]
Yeah. So, everything that's, has came in, they've already started counting. So, whatever comes in that night from the, the service centers, they will add to it. And then we will have election results that night. Okay?
Diana, do you have anything?
A great employee appreciation party.
That was fun.
It was very, very nice. The Candy Bomb, Candy Bomber, literally.
Candy Cannon.
Candy Cannon. That was the biggest hit ever. I did get enough, no. I knocked over 10 little kids.
I saw you shoving kids out of the way and grabbing the candy.
Anyway, I'm just very grateful, you know, looking at the quality of employee that we have, just very, very grateful for those that are working for us, anyway. And grateful. And I did try the brisket, and it was worth, that was very, very good. Thank you, R and R.
R and R.
And by the way, they sent home all of the leftover, or not leftovers.
It was leftovers, yeah.
Yes.
And I think they were taken to the fire. And you've had them.
I can smell it tonight.
Ooh.
Apparently, they didn't share with the police department. We've already had a few grievances filed, so.
I did see that the fire guys put, lifted them into the back of the truck. I did not see any policeman doing that.
You also had drinks because of us, too. Cold drinks because of us. We earned it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sid, anything?
No.
Lynn, anything?
Good. Had a good week.
Ben?
Yeah, enjoyed the employee event. Also enjoyed earlier in the day, some of us went and took a tour of the Bluffdale City Hall, which was a great experience. Good to see what audio visual technology's gonna be available. And, and our own city shared dual-purpose courtroom and council chambers will probably be very similar to that. So, anybody that's interested, ought to check out Bluffdale's. It's impressive.
I think it was the same architect, GRCA.
Yes.
So, yes.
And Jennifer, I did try different chairs.
Yeah, we tested out other chairs.
Scott, I did write something for, for our building. I wrote a cheesy little thing for you.
Like a poem?
Very good. We're ready.
Just because we can't just walk away, right?
No, we can. We gotta celebrate a little bit.
And I did borrow from Winston Churchill, too, a little bit, so, because you can't go wrong there.
I'm gonna turn this on while you do it.
Oh, I don't know if I can read it then. They say, old places have soul, while our community building has just that soul. It's soaked up a lot of emotions over time. It's said by Winston Churchill, "We shape our buildings; thereafter, our buildings shape us." We may not remember all the meetings that take, have taken place, but we will always remember the moments that took place, and the memories will last forever. There you go.
And with that being said, Eric, I would like to play "The Wind Beneath My Wings" by Ben Miller. There's some tissue.
Do I have a motion to adjourn? Quickly.
The motion that we adjourn.
Thank you, Ben. Thank you, my dear. I wasn't there.
I am. If you know.